23 if you would stand and face the flag. We'll ask Dennis.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Danny. We'll start on our agenda here. First item is approval of regular meeting minutes from April 17th. If there are no questions or anything on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion.
Motion by Clayton.
I'll second.
Second by Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval and ratification of bills. Everyone has got a chance, I presume, to look at those.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the, I guess it's on the first page of this bill list. There it's with Capital Link Consultants IDC Contracted Services for $4,000.
That was two months, that was April and May.
But what is that?
That is for Richie Sanders, he's a kind of a lobbyist for the IDC.
So we pay him $2,000 a month?
Yes, that comes out of the IDC money, that's not any money that the city puts in there, that's all from contribution money and their own money that they have in there. The money just, the checks and stuff just go through us, so it's not anything that the city actually pays, it's out of the IDC money.
And then the one underneath that, the IDC contract services for $150, that's like...
That's every month they clean the Center-on-Maine and it gets split between tourism, IDC and the Chamber.
And the last one, the one underneath that, the IDC telephone expense of 570.52?
Yes, they just switched, the Center-on-Maine over there just switched over to NCTC for their phone service and internet, so that was the fee to get it started and that was also split, so that was each NCTC's.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the...
I'll make a motion.
Terry and Billy, okay, thank you guys. Poppy proclamation. Do you have that, Lori?
It's in the packet, that's nothing that we have to read, we just need to get it motion and second and approval in the minutes to add that to our proclamation, so this is one that Mayor signed back on. And this one doesn't have his signature on it, for some reason she didn't make the copy that had your signature on it, so when I have, when I give that one a number tomorrow, I'll have you re-sign that, so it's actually got a signature in our book, so.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the...
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Tootie, second. Second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Public Works Week proclamation. Do we want to read that, Lori?
We don't have to read any of the proclamations, but this is one that Heather typed up for Wes today, that for next week, right, yeah, next week is Public Works Week and we typically do this one every year also.
So you'll just need a motion?
Yep, same thing.
Okay. And just in, for your information on this, I think next Friday that we're going to do something for the employees over there, we're going to cook. Yeah. Okay, okay. Right, show appreciation for them.
Do you hear your voices cooking or anything? I don't care.
Becky and I, we're going to cook, but we'll take all the help we can get. Okay. Do you have a grill over there, Wes? So I'll entertain a motion to proclaim Public Works Week. Gina, Clayton, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The other one is National Skilled Nursing Care Week proclamation.
Just the same thing, that's one Mayor and Judge Henderson signed this morning here at City Hall.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Motion by Billy, second. Second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Rezoning request, RZ-23-118, RECC property located at 107 Electric Avenue from R2 to C1. Tyler, I'll turn it over to you.
The Planning Commission had a public hearing on this zoning map amendment for Warren Roy Electric. The property is located at 107 Electric Avenue, it consists of three separate parcels and part of that agreement that they will have to do a plaque combination combining all those properties into one to make this official if it so passes. Hearing was held on Monday, May 8th, 2023 at 5:00 PM, Litchfield City Hall, all members were present from the Planning Commission. Application was incorporated herein by reference and recommends approval to change the zone from R-2 Single Family to C1 Highway Commercial. Planning Commission discussed this matter in detail and found that the request for a zoning map amendment should be granted. The Planning Commission noted that there have been major changes of an economic nature to the surrounding area and the proper zoning should be C-1 Highway Commercial.
Any questions?
I do, Mayor. I assume that recommendation was unanimous of planning and zoning?
Yes.
And consistent with your recommendation also?
Yes.
And the planning zoning attorney also was in agreement? Planning and zoning attorney also was in agreement with the recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept there. Motion by Tootie, second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky is here and after described from R-2 Single Family Medium Density to C-1 Highway Commercial. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky on May 8th, 2023, held a public hearing on application number RZ-23-118, the property is currently owned by Warren Roy Electric Cooperative Corporation and is designated as property having a PVA number 092-03-00-128, being more particularly described in deed book 340, page 40, deed book 340, page 44, and deed book 382, page 1, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at 107 Electric Avenue, Litchfield, Kentucky. Request asks for a change from R-2 Single Family Medium Density to C-1 Highway Commercial and whereas city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property. Its recommendation is attached incorporated herein by reference and now therefore be ordained by the City of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows, boundaries of the district as shown on district map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, be and same as hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made apart hereof as fully set out herein including the rezoning request from the Planning Commission dated 5/10/2023 to the Litchfield City Council, so the property is described as follows. Property description referred to property description PVA number 092-03-00-128, deed book 340, page 40, deed book 340, page 44, and deed book 382, page 1, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at 107 Electric Avenue, Litchfield, Kentucky, 42754, now zoned C-1 Highway Commercial after the adoption of this ordinance.
Okay. And part of the reason, just for y'alls information, they had applied to put a sign up at their new building and when Tyler got to looking into it, the property, of course it was the Lee property, it had never been changed to commercial property, so that's basically what this is about, getting it zoned correctly and they're getting all the property on one plaque instead of three different ones, so. Okay, so we've got that covered for tonight, right?
Yes, we will vote on it to the next week.
Okay. Rezoning of property located at southwest intersection of Grayson Springs Road and William Thomason Highway, rezoned from R-2 to C-1.
Property owner is S&amp;S Rentals and Sales, Steve Ashley, member, manager. This property is located at the southwest corner of 1214 and the bypass at the one acre parcel. Request to change of C-1, public hearing was held on May the 8th at 5:00 PM, the Litchfield Planning Commission, all members were present, administrator presented a application and was recommended approval, the Planning Commission discussed this matter in detail and found that the request for a zoning map amendment should be granted. The Planning Commission noted that there have been major changes of an economic nature to the surrounding area and the proper zoning should be C-1. The properties in the general area are zoned C-1 and present zoning classification for this property is incorrect.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation. Okay, motion by Clayton, second. Second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to read this ordinance now?
Yes, for the first reading.
Okay.
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky is here and after described from R-2 Single Family Medium Density to C-1 Highway Commercial. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky on May 8th, 2023, held a public hearing on application number RZ-23-117, the property is currently owned by S&amp;S Rentals and Sales, Steve Ashley, member, manager, and is designated as a property having a PVA number 093-00-00-008.0F, being more particularly described in deed book 488, page 483, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at the southwest intersection of Grayson Springs Road and William Thomason Byway, Litchfield, Kentucky. The request asks for a change from R-2 Single Family Medium Density to C-1 Highway Commercial and whereas the city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property. Its recommendation is attached and incorporated herein by reference and now therefore be ordained by the City of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows, boundaries of the district as shown on district map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, be and same as hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made part hereof as fully set out herein including the rezoning request from the Planning Commission dated 5/10/2023 to the Litchfield City Council, so the property is described as follows. Property description referred to property description PVA number 093-00-00-008.0F, deed book 488, page 483, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at the southwest intersection of Grayson Springs Road and William Thomason Byway, Litchfield, Kentucky, 42754, now zoned, now zoned C-1 Highway Commercial after the adoption of this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Tyler.
I have a, can I ask a question to Tyler on this? Tyler, I'm having a hard time picturing where this is, is there anything on the property currently?
No.
There's not? Have they checked to make sure utilities can be run, I mean, if they're planning on building, have they checked to see if utilities can be run to it? As far as water, gas?
I don't know if they have or not, it doesn't, they don't have to check that to get a zone change, but it's right on the corner of 1214 and Grayson Springs Road, I would assume that there's water and everything out there already.
Should be sewer in that area because of the businesses across the road from it, I would guess fairly close.
It's directly across 1214 from Raised Flowers and then there's a house on the same side of the road as them, right next to the lot that they're going to be building on.
Okay. So it's actually on Grayson Springs Road, right?
Yeah, the entrance will come off of Grayson Springs Road, not the bypass.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Let me move on to second draft of ordinance with additional requirements of building permit holders.
I had high hopes that I would have a full second draft, but I don't have that now. We do have an extra week in this month, we won't have a meeting, so it'll give me a whole extra week, so I'm hoping to knock it out that first of June.
Okay. We just tabled that for now.
Yeah. I did talk to Tyler, we've worked through it a lot, I do want to do a check off with Dave Vickery because he's Planning and Zoning Commission Attorney and so he was supposed to be doing some overhauls on the planning and zoning ordinances and I don't want to step on his toes if he had already learned anything on that. So I'll check with him too when I get my second draft done to make sure where he's at on his, because he was going to do some major legal work on overhauling though, so I don't want us doing double work.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Clayton, second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.
And that is under KRS 61.8101F for personnel reasons.
I'll entertain a motion to come back in session.
I make a motion.
Motion by Clayton, second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Earlene?
We had some personnel issues specifically, some changes in the personnel policy.
I don't know if you're on.
We had some personnel issues we needed to discuss with some potential changes to the personnel policy involving our substance abuse, addiction issues, and some potential changes we're gonna be making. We are actually gonna table that until, to take any votes until the next meeting. Once Utilities is gonna be at that meeting in June and we'll discuss it then and hopefully I'll have the draft of that personnel policy change and we can take a vote at that time.
Okay. Thanks, Earlene. Next on the agenda, I guess, is visitors. I don't see any visitors, so we'll go on through that. Unfinished business, we'll go around the room, Billy.
Yes, sir.
Terry?
I only have one thing. Wesley, is anything going to happen with the sidewalk on Brando Argyle?
Yes. I'm working on it, maybe checking on some permit and stuff, but the cost of that expense is probably gonna run into my next year's budget for what I'm gonna try to do to lower that sidewalk down to street level because it'd be 88 feet wide and they have tall soot and so. It's not any different than what it was when we looked at a year or two ago. There was a little piece where, actually a car hit that there not too long ago, went off in there and scraped some wood off, but it's still, it's safe enough to walk on and stuff too, so we did check that just to, just to make sure that it didn't work or something.
That's all I have.
Tootie?
In the minutes, it's, I think we talked about the shelter?
Yes.
And it said that you were gonna check to see about a contract?
Yes.
If they get with you, and where do we stand on that?
Well, she emailed me, and then Lori provided me with the contract that we had, with the Row Veterinary Services.
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't have a copy of that.
Which one?
The...
That's the one I typed up for Litchfield. Are you talking about the Row? We've got a copy in my office somewhere. I thought it was in this folder, but I don't have it. That's the one I had you initially read.
Yeah. That's one.
What contract are you looking for, Earlene?
Well, I've got a copy here of the one with Row Veterinary Services. Is that the one in Rockin' Ridge, or is that the one in Harden?
That's one in Hardenburg.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, the Hardenburg. I've got a copy here of the Hardenburg. I've read through it, and then I've read initially through the one with, what's the other provider?
It's in Elizabeth Town.
In Elizabeth Town, and that's who we have currently a contract with now. And the council, or the, is the council as a whole wanting to look at just what each facility is going to provide, or with, because I thought what we were gonna do was have Litchfield produce their prices, and...
I guess that's what I'm asking. I was a little confused, too. I didn't know where we stood and what we were doing, so...
Yeah.
I could shed some light on that.
Okay, and I hadn't been provided the Litchfield of what their proposal is. I just have Hardenburg, and I have what we have on contract with Elizabeth Town.
Okay.
But, so I've got those two. I don't have Litchfield yet, but I'll be happy to read through it as soon as I get it.
I talked with the girls at the animal shelter a couple of days ago, and they had some concerns that I tried to address with them. I've got some information for anybody that'd like to look at it, so I'll kind of leave it at that right now. But they're looking at, maybe doing the surgery contract one place and having, doing the normal day-to-day stuff at another place, so...
Okay.
But I'd be glad to talk to any of you after the meeting, just kind of fill you in.
Before that's on the agenda for us to vote on it, can you make sure that you contact Kayla at the animal shelter and whoever else at the animal shelter to make sure that they're aware of it, so that they can be here to answer any questions, or, you know, give us information that we may need?
I'll set up the meeting with her. When she first come into position, I'd talk to her, and we had emailed some, so I'll make sure that me and her have a meeting before the meeting, to make sure we have all our paperwork in line to present to council, so...
And that she's here.
And yes, I'll have her come.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Denny?
I haven't seen any text about the sound system. I assume it's fixed.
They worked on it today. Think they've got it going. I assume we're all right on line, Wes?
Yes.
Right, and I was gonna bring that up, too, Denny. I've got an email here from Mark
Buckles where they worked on it. There was three of the Bluetooth transmitter lengthed and failed, so they got all that working, and hopefully, and they think it may have come about when the windstorm come through, because we had all that, we, you know, we had other damage here where the power surged, and so he thinks maybe that's what it was. And I think he was having to buy another piece or something for us to totally get everything fixed.
But we're back on...
It sounded a whole lot better out here. It's not echoing, so...
They were probably here close to a couple hours today, working on and piddling with it, so...
The only other thing I had was, I guess, for Earlene, what status as far as just doing the, adding the question and answering session for commission appointees?
For what?
Commission appointees.
Oh, I can have that, a first draft of it for that June, that first June meeting.
Okay. Probably a pretty good time.
And that, that won't take long. It's just, because you all took a vote on it in the minutes, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, yeah, so I'll have that at that next meeting, because it'll just be a small. Now, I'll have to go back in minutes and look, but did we set that it was just gonna be at that meeting prior to the, when the vote was taken?
Yes, that was my understanding.
Okay.
The only thing I had was Tammy Sossman wanted me to remind everybody of the Memorial Day procession. I think it's the Saturday, the 27th, and they still need people to help carry the placards. So I think she said they were gonna start meeting at nine, and the procession is at 10, so...
They do have a speaker lined up. Most of you may know him, Roger Lush. Roger's gonna speak for that, for that meeting, so I think you did a good job. Anything else, Lori?
I think that's all I have.
Earlene?
On the code enforcement, I do plan to have an amended ordinance ready for, on the condemned property. I don't have that for this meeting, but I plan to have it at that June meeting. I plan to knock out a lot of writing in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So one good thing is, we'll have a lot of reading at that meeting, not this one, so...
Yeah, there you go.
And it will also be the utility, so we will be here a good long amount of times.
Might be, might have to bring supper in, so...
Right.
Wesley? David?
No.
Okay. We'll go to new business, I guess. Billy?
We do have Art of Park this weekend.
Yes.
I hadn't seen a lot of Wesley's event at all.
I hadn't either.
Today, today's our stay out.
Yeah.
So it is Saturday.
It is, yeah.
And from this Saturday till October, we have a bunch of weekends that are busy.
Yeah.
David's being is gonna be busy, Wesley's guy's gonna be busy. They're gonna be, I mean, there's a lot of events like Wes throughout the community.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's...
Okay. Terry?
Wesley, couple more questions for you, and I've been meaning to bring this one up for a few weeks now, because several people have reached out. Are we gonna get new street signs, the actual signs that have the street names on them? Wasn't there something passed a few years ago, the state, so...
We've been in the process of changing those out, because there were so many years they changed the way the rules have to be on, and that, lowercase, rest of them. So many others, you see, it's all capital. We're trying to change out, but we can only do so many for budget here, so just due to situation, you know. But we've got several places, I don't know, like that, anyway, but we are working on that. As far as getting a lot of them changed out, I think we're about halfway to the top.
Okay. I have one more question. I've had a lot of people to contact me over the last couple of weeks, specifically out of the Cavemel Road area. There is a lot of really big farm machinery that is now traveling Cavemel Road. The type of farm machinery that when you meet out on the highway, you have to get off of the road. Well, Cavemel Road is not nearly as wide as some of the big highways. Is this just how it's going to be?
Yeah, I mean, I don't... Some of them are one, I mean, I've seen some of them come through town, and they're monster tractors and everything come through, but, you know, most of the time they'll have a flagger or something with them, or somebody with their flashing lights on and all that, but as far as, I don't know that we can keep them...
But this is Cavemel Road. This is not a highway. This is a regular city street.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's...
There's nothing to be treated, it's sort of...
There's no, there's nothing legally you can do to restrict that.
As long as they have a proper rest score or something like that, if they're oversized, that's it.
Yeah.
At least you gotta drive.
Driveways and ditches will be hitting once. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Terry. Tootie?
No, sir.
Clayton?
No, sir.
Gina? I'm good. Our crack city clerk has brought to our attention about the hydrants. That would probably be a good thing to have at the next meeting with utilities in there, because there's a direct conflict in our ordinance that's relating to that.
I've got a copy of that, that, what I found in the ordinance, Earlene. I was gonna talk to her about it this week when she was in the office Thursday, Friday, whatever day she was gonna be there.
Utilities could provide some, their position on it. Other question is to Wes, what do you do with the old signs? That would be, a lot of people, they're pretty annoying for those. Especially out of Central Avenue, wouldn't you think, David?
Oh!
Especially out of Central Avenue area.
I imagine. Might be a fire within.
Seal bids, that's what I'm thinking.
Exactly.
We've got, heard it's stacked up all the way now, two different ones, but I mean, I...
It's like a fundraiser.
I think that'd be pretty neat, too.
Fundraiser or something.
Denny have Santa Cruz loaded up tomorrow?
I'll be open. That's all. Thanks, man.
Lori, any new business?
No.
Earlene?
No.
Wes?
Oh, actually, I do. I just want to remind everybody about the personnel email I sent out. Just take a look through it, and then kind of just start reading on it, but that's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Wes? David?
No, sir.
Only thing I'll mention under new business for you guys, I did, finally got confirmation, been working on it a while today, that we are gonna get wireless over to all parks, park area, and that will allow them to take credit card payments and all that, so. It's been a while coming, and it's kind of hard to get through, but we, I finally got confirmation from the company today, so. Other utility commission, as we said, plans to end the June 5th meeting. Anybody else got anything for we adjourn?
I do. Mayor, thanks for doing that. That's a big deal, and probably I'll thank Charlie Elmore, if y'all have been up to the square of the Big Seven. It's pretty neat.
Yeah. We've got a lot of stuff going on on the square, and it's, it's gonna really improve just the quality of people, you know, spending time up there, and a lot of good things going on up there, and some good things going on all over town now. I will mention everybody got something here, the Crusade for Children, be at the Ronald Hudson Firehouse June 4th, the first Saturday in June. They will have food and drinks there. TV station will be there, I think WBKO, and several other departments, so I'm sure Tim and them would appreciate anybody's presence out there that can come. That's a, that's a Sunday. It's Saturday, that's a Sunday, so, okay.
Mayor, one last thing. The chamber luncheon is this Thursday. I think Tootie and Clayton were the only two that I had down, so...
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Clayton, second?
Second.
Second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.